I think we had quite a discussion on that already, but I believe we have a presentation from the city manager.
Really? No presentation, Mayor, than just to simply indicate that this was a request made by Councilmember Sandberg at that last meeting to discuss the investigation that I ordered on March 13th. And that's all the information that I have available to present to you. And I'm assuming council will have deliberations and you might have questions for staff at some point this evening.
So, city manager, has the investigator given you any indication when he might have a final draft for council?
Well, we're hoping that we would have a draft by some point before the end of this month, but also the investigator is requesting information from individual council members to be submitted in writing. And so, the completeness of that report will depend largely on the council members completing that information and getting it back to the investigator in a timely manner.
Okay.
And I know that not all council members have submitted that information yet, but we're asking for the investigation to be thorough and comprehensive, but at the same time be completed in an expedient manner, because we know you're all very interested in it.
Right. And as I've been waiting through my emails, because I haven't kept up with them with my illness, I just got to that one, so I'm guilty and I will be submitting my answers to him probably tomorrow. So, the city manager's basically told us that there's nothing to report at this point, so I don't know that there's much of a discussion to have. We did have a pretty thorough discussion that included the investigation, but Councilmember Sandberg, I see you asked to be recognized.
Thank you. So, in addition to the request of written responses from council members and the request of an agreement, what, do you know what additional work or information the investigator is asking for, acquiring?
Generally, I'm aware that the investigator is looking into, asking for information from Mr. Richards with regard to the timeline of the reported purchase and sale agreement and any transaction attempts with regard to the golf course. He is sent out the questions to council, is waiting for responses on those from council, and is going to have some, he informed me today that he'll have some follow-up questions for council, once he's had a chance to review everybody's, all council members' answers. He also has a couple of questions that he wants staff to answer that have, and I don't know the nature of those, but I just know that he said that he's going to have some, a couple of written questions for myself and city manager to answer to help him in his Additionally, he has all of the documentary evidence and background information that I was able to pull together for him. And then, other than review of the documentary evidence and research of the law, he'll just go where the responses and the investigation takes him from there.
Thank you, city attorney. You still have the floor?
Thank you. And so, on, at the March 10th meeting, Councilmember Rayum made a motion regarding the investigation that was ruled out of order, and the city attorney explained that the motion was out of order because it was not germane to the matter on the agenda, and felt that this needed to be discussed, the matter of the investigation needed to be discussed by all council members. In fact, our meeting minutes reflect that council members have a right to participate. And so, I was a little bit shocked that immediately thereafter, the city manager decided to initiate this investigation, since I felt we were going to discuss it as a council. And so, I was curious as to why you selected the WCIA, and what was that process?
Well, WCIA frequently does investigations on our behalf when we're involved in matters of litigation and liability, and they seem like the entity that would be appropriate for us to contact regarding this investigation. Also, it's an investigation that we're not paying directly for. Of course, it's paid for by the contributions that we make and the contributions of all of the members of that association and contribute towards.
Well, I guess I just have a concern for why we, I mean, we would pick this organization because it's free to us, and I'm just concerned about the independence that can be gained through the organization. I'm hopeful, a member of the community did mention that they were concerned about this. When I look at the WCIA's website, their goal is to provide liability and property financial protection, and what they do is provide comprehensive risk field services. So, I'm hopeful that this investigation is truly independent and not a exercise in risk management or risk mitigation.
Well, just to clarify, the fact that we're not paying directly for this was one of the considerations, not the only consideration.
Thank you, I'm done.
Any other comments? Councilmember Rayum?
So, I just wanted to point out, the investigation is about legal as well as ethics investigation. And the, I thought it would be important to read to the public that we have, the city, the council and all city staff have a code of ethics that we're required to abide by. It's section 10.2 of our personnel policies and procedures, and you can get that online. So, but in our, it's also in our, sorry, our protocol manual that we are supposed to abide by those as council members. It's the policy of the city of Bothell to uphold, this is out of the council protocol manual. It is the policy of the city of Bothell to uphold, promote, and demand the highest standards of ethics from all of its elected and appointed officials. Accordingly, all members of the city council, members of all appointed boards, commissions, committees, city employees, consultants, and professional service providers are expected to maintain the utmost standards of personal integrity, truthfulness, honesty, and fairness in carrying out their public duties, avoid any improprieties in their roles as public servants, and never use their city position or powers for personal gain. Section 2 and 10 of the city of Bothell Personnel Policies and Procedures address personal gain. Oh, I'm sorry, general rules of conduct and provide guidelines for city officials to be worthy of public trust and abide by the oath of office. So, anyhow, I won't keep reading to you, but it's a really good read in the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual. I think it's a great thing that we have a code of ethics. Some cities don't have this, or at least it doesn't apply to their elected officials, but ours certainly does, so that's all I had to say.
Any others with comment?
I have a comment.
Councilmember Lamb?
So, I think it's important, you know, it's been raised, the idea of the investigation as being independent. I think it's important while an investigation is pending, not to try to manipulate it, not to try to comment on it, or not to try to speak to it. We've now had somebody engaged to conduct an investigation, that person is doing it, that's what was reported to us today, and I think it's important that we, as a council, it should be a genuinely independent investigation, and I think that involves us not inserting ourselves into that process. So, I appreciate and am comfortable with what's been articulated, and I look forward to receiving the report when it's concluded and having an opportunity to speak with the investigator.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. Any other comments? Councilmember Evans, Councilmember Agnew?
All right. Well, thank you all for your comments, and city manager and city attorney for your input. I think it's important that we let the process, at this point, we've started an independent investigation, we let the process go through, we receive the report, we read the report, and then, at that point, we will know the direction of our discussion at that point. So, I thank everybody for their comments on that. So, now that will take us to, well, we've got five minutes until our meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a motion to extend the meeting until 9:30 and to go into an executive session to discuss employee contract matters until approximately 9:10.
So, moving to exec session now is your...
Moving to exec session. Moving to exec session now and extending the meeting until 9:30, so that...
Okay, there's your motion, is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Lamb and seconded by Councilmember Agnew to extend the meeting to 9:30 and to go into executive session until 9:10. It is my understanding that this executive session will be for matters of collective bargaining, but the city attorney said there's also another in...
A brief discussion with legal counsel regarding ongoing legal risk issues.
Okay, so it was...
As an additional item for the...
Just so that we know what we're voting on, as far as the exec session, the discussions of collective bargaining and discussions of the legal issue. So, is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sandberg?
I'll be voting no. I would prefer that we continue with our next agenda item, which is the study session regarding the Transportation Benefit District and hold the executive session at the conclusion of that. So, I'll be voting no.
Any others? Councilmember Rayum?
Sorry. Can I just get a point of clarification? Why did we want to move the executive session up instead of having the study session? Or the discussion of transportation benefits?
I would have to defer that to Councilmember Lamb. It's his motion.
I'm doing it out of courtesy to our human resources director, because we typically hold our executive sessions during the break, and our human resources director, we didn't think to do that, and so she, rather than having it during the break when others were mingling and doing other things, she wasn't able to give us that briefing. So, I was trying to do her the courtesy of having that executive session now so that she could return home.
Okay, thanks.
And that would be on me? I don't run the meetings all the time and sometimes...
Not that I don't have, not that I don't have enormous respect and personal affection for our public works director also, but we typically don't have our study session presentations during our snack break, and I felt that it was appropriate to, and I saw our human resources director look hopefully into our break room, and then was, saw her hopes dashed, and so the purpose of my motion was simply to extend a professional courtesy.
Councilmember Evans?
I guess the only question I have now, with the other item that the city attorney has brought up, are we going to have 10 minutes? Are we going to be able to get both of these done in 10 minutes?
30 seconds.
Great.
To a minute.
Let's move forward, thank you.
All right, so the motion before is, Councilmember Agnew, would you like to speak to this at all, or?
Okay. The motion before is moved by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Agnew, is to extend the meeting until 9:30, but to go into executive session until 9:10 for matters of collective bargaining and potential litigation. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 5 to 1 with Councilmember Sandberg in the negative. We will be reassessed to executive session till no later than 9:10.
Yeah, you gotta cut it by two-thirds. You get a third of the time.
Oh, because...
Bothell City Council is now back in session. Hey, four minutes early, gotta like that. So, we are now at AB 15-038, our study session regarding the Transportation Benefit District. There's no action expected tonight. We will be having a public hearing on this item April 21st of this year. So, we have, looks like Director Leonhardt and Director Shackman for a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, deputy mayor and council, thank you very much. We have a very brief presentation and will be here for questions. We have quite a bit of staff here who can answer questions for you. So, just as a reminder, this is the result of your 2015 city council retreat from January. We had the discussion with the council about funding street maintenance needs primarily, and recommended to implement a $20 Transportation Benefit District license fee immediately, and then do some work with the community, engage the community and determine what a ballot measure could look like, and that would be a Transportation Benefit District license fee of up to $100, and that would be total, so $80 in addition to the council manic 20. Just as a brief education, Transportation Benefit Districts, or reminder, they're independent taxing districts, but they, the board can typically consist of the municipality's legislature. They are for, specifically for funding transportation improvements and maintenance. So, what we're talking about here is strictly for transportation side of the house. Some of the revenue options that are available to you as part of a Transportation Benefit District are a $20 council manic license fee, up to a $100 license fee, and that would have to be subject to voter approval. Also, 0.2% sales tax would be available to you, but that is also subject to voter approval. There are other revenue options, these are just the three that we typically speak of. And again, the transportation funding needs that the city of Bothell currently has are to replace lost and one-time revenues that are currently funding our street fund, to restore maintenance programs such as pavement and sidewalk repair that we have foregone over previous budgets, also to increase pavement preservation, so the overlay program, and also to have a conversation about possibly increasing sidewalk construction. So, the recommended next steps, the, as the deputy mayor mentioned, there will be a public hearing on April 21st for council to consider adopting an ordinance to establish the Transportation Benefit District. And then, if that occurs, then we, staff would come back at a later date to propose a $20 license renewal fee. And in the meantime, staff will be starting a public engagement process to discuss what level of TBD ballot measure would be preferred by the community, and we'd also come back to the council for that. So, that is the extent of my extensive presentation, and we are here to answer questions.
Great, thank you very much. So, are there any questions of staff at this point? Councilmember Rayum?
How much money will that, we estimate how much money that would bring in per year?
Because of the annexations that took place at the end of February, we don't have a full year of data from the Department of Licensing yet, but we anticipate, based on what we know, and if that trend continues for an additional two months, it'll be about $750,000 for the $20. The 0.2% sales tax increase would actually bring in about $2.37 million, so that would be significant, but again, as Aaron said, you know, there's multiple ways that the council can choose to use revenues or opportunities to bring in revenues, and that could be done through a ballot measure for the $100 licensing fee, or it could be an increase in sales tax, but basically, it all comes down to taking it to the voters and having a package that we can take to them that they endorse as far as street improvements and future maintenance and that type of thing. Also, speaking to one of our citizens tonight, asked whether or not a TBD can issue bonds. Yes, they can. It depends on how they're going to utilize those bonds, if they're going to pay back a project and they plan on using the dollars that are coming in from sales tax, it would have to be a bond that was paid off within 10 years, obviously. So, you would want to use different funds based on the extent of the project and the terms of the bond that's issued.
So, the higher end, you said that was the, the sales tax increase?
Correct.
So, what is the annual need that we need to keep our CPI, is it?
I'm gonna...
PCI at 70?
I think that's more of a public works question, so I'm going to let Aaron go ahead and speak to that. Steve Markoff is going to come and speak to that.
So, I think that number is a large number, that's the $10 million a year?
To keep a, keep it at 70, 70 out of 100?
I think we went through that at the council retreat.
You said it was 10 million a year?
Was it 70 or 80? I can't remember.
So, it's in our council retreat packet, I can go back and look at that, and, okay.
Could have been the 80. I think 70 is difficult to maintain at a certain level. 80, I think, is the sweet spot, so to speak.
But our current standard is 70? Is that correct?
80, yeah. So, about 5.8 million to keep it at 69?
To keep it at 69?
At the end of six years, and then we have to. Again, please understand that as you defer maintenance, your backlog gets bigger and more expensive, so we can talk six years at a time, but the sweet spot is the PCI of 80, where you can kind of maintain that at a certain level. And again, as we talked about at the council retreat, what we're doing this year is we're spending a little bit of extra money to try to go street by street, we're looking at alternatives, because previously, we only looked at overlay, we didn't do any other types of, you know, slurry seals or micro resurfacing. We're opening up that toolbox and we're seeing what we can do, and we want to come back and talk to you next year and basically talk about, give you a recommendation on how much to spend per year.
So, I just had one other comment. I rode the chili hilly on Bainbridge Island, and they had a chip seal out there that actually you can ride on, and it's a really high quality compared to any other chips. I didn't, I realized it was chip seal that we stopped, but the whole, I think the whole island, I don't know if you guys contacted them, but that was, whatever they used for specification, it really worked nicely, so, even to ride a bike on. That was it, that was my question.
Councilmember Evans?
Councilmember Rayum, I have a chip seal on the street leading to my house, and I ride my bicycle on it all the time. You're more than welcome to ride yours on there too and give it a try. Okay? Thank you, staff. I submitted some questions and I got some great answers back, and some of the questions you asked, I think, Andy, are in there, so if you want, the amounts, dollar amounts and that type of thing. One question I had, so the money that we get each time from King County, or that we've been getting from King County, is that a continuous thing that's going to continue, or does that go away at some point?
It's gone.
Oh, it's gone.
It came in, yeah, it basically was in lieu of property tax because of the timing of the annexation.
So, at one time...
We were not able to levy property tax.
Okay.
So, we ended up with road tax instead, so those monies are gone after this two-year period. They've, you know, they're the Band-Aid for 15, 16, so, you know, this street maintenance has not had a true revenue stream that is singular to that purpose for 15 years.
Well, we had one, but we lost both of them. We had two.
Yeah, and streetlights and...
And both of those have been taken away, right, okay.
So, yeah, we're just, you know, we're bringing this to you now because, you know, some type of action needs to be taken, and we need to look at all those options, so...
So, another question, I think, was asked by one of the public who spoke tonight. Do you have any idea how many vehicles are registered? It was mentioned 40,000. I've got kids, or grandkids, they don't have vehicles, I don't think, so I just...
And you're correct. There's approximately 31,000 in the original Bothell without the annexation area. We're watching the annexation area. Department of Licensing only adds the cars as they come in and buy their tabs.
Okay.
So, and they're a quarter behind in the calculations, and that's just normal for their process, it's not that they're behind in their job duties. It's how they analyze the data and report the data, and so, we will not know until the end of May, possibly the beginning of June, how many cars are actually registered and they go in and buy their tabs from the annexation areas in King County. So, I expect it probably will be, you know...
So, every year that I renew my car tabs, they come due on my vehicles, I would pay this additional $20.
Correct.
Now, if I renew through Snohomish County, do I still pay the $20?
Yes.
Okay, great, just want to make sure there wasn't a loophole or something.
I'll let you down.
Okay. And I asked a question about, if we had this in place now, we were generating revenue, what would be the first use of this money? And I think you stated, Aaron, someone stated it's primarily street maintenance right now. We're not necessarily, we're not building new streets with this, it's really maintenance of our existing infrastructure, pretty much. Okay, and one last question or comment I had on the ordinance that was proposed in our packet, the draft ordinance, on page 85, actually, it's section 1 under the purpose, it states, "The city council finds it is in the public interest to provide adequate levels of funding." Well, if we pass the $20 fee, that is not adequate levels of funding. It seems like to me, replace the word with adequate with additional funding sources or whatever the case may be, because if we go with the 20, that doesn't, that's not adequate. There's, we're a long ways from adequate.
So, and I appreciate that, Councilwoman. The ordinance would be for formation of the Transportation Benefit District overall, so that would encompass whatever funding you choose going forward as well, so...
So, hopefully, at some point, the Transportation Benefit District would provide adequate funds for the maintenance of our streets.
We are hopeful.
It may not end the first shot.
Correct.
Or second or third, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions of staff? Councilmember Lamb?
So, this is going beyond to the, up to the $100 a year. Has any municipality passed anything in excess of $20?
There's multiple, there's multiple entities that actually have implemented the increase in sales tax.
Okay, but none, none in the car tab? At least, as I'm looking at it, it doesn't look like there's any in the car tab.
Without my glasses, I'm seeing $20, I believe, all the way down also.
And the document in your packet is from 2013, so there have been some TBDs that have passed since that information packet from AWC, so there may be some additional TBDs since then, and we can provide that information for the April 21st public hearing.
So, I was, yeah, I was looking at ones that were passed in 2014, and it doesn't look like there was, King County had a $60 one that failed, but I don't see any ones beyond $20 that have been passed by the voters, although, as you pointed out, a number of sales tax versions have passed.
Any other comments? Councilmember Sandberg?
So, what other funding mechanisms would be available to us besides establishing a TBD?
You mean revenues that are available for transportation or just revenues that are available? You could do a levy lid lift, you know, you could bond based on the, what you know you're going to bring in from the TBD. you know you're gonna bring in from the TBD. There's, I'm sorry? A voted maintenance levy. There's, there's other alternatives, but they, they honestly all come down to the same thing, which is, you know, going to the voters and asking for them to participate in solving this problem. So no matter which, which way we go, if we're gonna bring in more than the $750,000 in order to address the maintenance issue, we need to appeal to the voters, and we need to have a package together that solves the problem, or, or at least makes it clear to them what they're getting for their, whatever investment they make.
What's the difference between a levy lid lift and a voted maintenance levy?
Purpose. A levy lid lift can be used for a lot of other things. It, I, it may also, a levy lid lift can be permanent, it can be six years. It has, it just has different specifics. So each one can be used in a different, in a different manner, for a different purpose, and for a different length of time. I would have to actually look the, each one up to see, you know, exactly what difference was between those two.
And those are voter-approved options as opposed to a $20 car tab fee, which is, could be council manic?
Exactly. Mm-hmm. And that was why it was selected, because of the issues that staff brought to council at the, at the retreat. It was one action that could be taken immediately, keeping in mind that you can't, you can enact the TBD, but you can't implement it for six months after you enact. So that was the reason that it was, let's go ahead and get started on this, you know, and have staff bring more information to you, along with, you know, how much money would it bring in, how much do we need, that type of thing. And that was, that was really the push to get it to you quickly after the retreat.
And so I, I see, I understand a car tab fee, a $20 per vehicle license renewal fee. I go to renew my vehicle tabs every year, and I'll pay an extra $20. The other option that you have suggested that could fund a TBD is a 0.2% sales and use tax. So that's, anything I buy within the city or services that I use, I would pay an additional 0.2%.
And that's, you know, and how that gets implemented, maybe the $100, or $80, or $60 from the TBD that would be directly related to use of the roads. You know, those are the decisions that have to be made. The amount of dollars that is needed to maintain the roads at the level that you want versus what the different options are for bringing in those revenues, and does the cost tie to the, the use of the streets?
And we could institute something 0.2% or lower, is that correct?
Absolutely.
By voter approval, just not anything higher than 0.2% for a TBD. But something like a levy lid lift would be based on a property, it would be an evaluate, valuation per $1,000 of assessed value? Is that what that would be? Okay. I would be interested in learning about more options for a future agenda bill. The next question I have is, is a TBD a revenue instrument that exists in perpetuity? Or how is it dissolved, or how does it end?
You've got me on that one. I would guess that the city attorney would have to respond to that, or we would have to bring back information to you at the next meeting.
Because I think one of the things that is attractive in a levy lid lift is you go to the voters with a list of projects, and it's term limited, you know, it's for six years or whatever the term is. People say, okay, I'm gonna pay for something, I know what I'm gonna get, and that's gonna retire in six years.
From a financial position and from the city's position, that brings more risk to the city, because if you ever do bond against the revenues that are coming in, you know, you could come to a place where you no longer have the funds that are being set aside for that purpose. The other thing is that street maintenance isn't going to go away. And so basically, every six years, you're crossing your fingers that it's gonna get, you know, voted for, and you have staff, you have, you know, budgets and plans for service delivery, that all are in question for that period before it goes back to the voters. So it's, you know, there's different options, there's different risks with each one. It's, you just have to, I guess, look at each one and decide what the best fit is for Bothell, and what you think the Bothell voters will support.
And then you presented in the slide the next steps. April 21st was to establish a TBD, which doesn't mean that we are approving any kind of funding mechanism for it, it's just establishing a TBD. And then you talked about a public engagement process. Would you be open to having the public engagement process to determine preferred level, and also level of funding, and also the mechanism of funding, and have that public process at least started with some feedback to council before we adopt an ordinance that establishes a TBD?
Again, it's six months to implement. So for that purpose, I would probably encourage enacting and not implementing for six months during that period of speaking with citizens and that type of thing. So at least you've taken that step of eliminating that six months of implementation period. And then I'll leave it up to the Public Works Director as how she's going to, or what suggestions or recommendations she's gonna have for the, her the interaction with the citizens.
So staff's intent regarding the public engagement process will be to come back to council and describe what the process we intend to be. One of the thoughts that we've had is even setting up a transportation kind of committee, so that we can go through an educational process to talk about the different options that would be available to us for pavement preservation, for example. So we look at that as being a fairly lengthy process to really get the, the temperature of the, of the community. And as Tammy mentioned, the, the need for the $20 license renewal fee to backfill existing one-time revenues and revenues that have been lost, that is a more immediate need that we, we have at this point in time, and why we recommend moving forward with that soon.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 9:40.
There's a motion seconded extending the meeting to 9:40. Is there any discussion on, moved by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by Councilmember Rayum. Is there any discussion on the motion? There are still other council members to, that have time available. Are you almost done with your questions?
Yes, and I'd be willing to extend it even longer for, to accommodate other council members.
I, that, no comment. All right, hearing, hearing, seeing no discussion. All in favor extending the meeting to 9:40, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? So the motion carries four to two with Deputy Mayor Spivey and Councilmember Lamb in a negative.
So a question was asked by a member of the public as well. Can the funds collected by a TBD be used to build new streets, or is it exclusively for the maintenance of existing streets?
The funds can be used for building new streets. The staff proposal currently is to focus on maintenance primarily, with the exception of potentially extending some sidewalks, filling some sidewalk gaps.
Okay. And then, as an independent taxing district, where does a TBD rank in relation to other taxing districts like schools and regional transit authorities, fire districts, RFAs? And what kind of impact does that have?
I would actually have to look that up. I, I don't know. I would guess that it actually comes before parks, but I would have to look that up and get back to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
I believe that as far as a taxing district, even though it's a taxing district, the rank order for where they fall, that's in a property tax specific area. This is not a property tax, so it wouldn't be held to that, that rank order, because it's a, it's a license fee and/or a sales tax. It's not a property tax. And that's what those taxing districts are in rank order for, would be property tax.
And then my last question, I'll ask any other ones by email, is, so the $20 car tab fee only applies to residents of Bothell. So for example, I imagine that we get a significant amount of road use from employees that travel to businesses located within Bothell. So does this $20 or a car tab fee approach then pretty much directly impact just the residents, and then commuters from outside the city? Don't, there's no mechanism to collect from, from that usage?
Unless it's a business-owned vehicle, a Bothell business vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Agnew?
So I would not be in support of a levy, and my rationalization for that is, we fund the paramedic services in this county by levy that is up every six years. And though everybody loves medic one, one year it failed. So I would not be in support of that. When we go to a vote of the citizens, it is a simple majority?
I believe so. That's what I read today, but I'll defer that to the city attorney.
I believe she's correct on that.
Okay. And I just beg to wonder, and I know that we've been talking about this since our retreat, but I wondered myself whether if we would have followed the city's conclusions on the traffic impact fees and increased those, and immediately mandated those, if this would have had an impact on any of this. Now, I know that they're two separate issues, but it begs to wonder.
So the impact fees are specific to projects that are on the impact fee list, so they're separate from the, the funding that we are looking at here for maintenance.
Okay, and I was noticing that you were talking about crosswalks at all in there? Because I know one that really needs one, you know, those little people in Bahala, they need to get across that street. They're still having a hard time.
And in the community engagement process, we'll, we'll talk about that, I'm sure.
Any other comments? Well, I want to thank you for your presentation. I, as, car tabs are very, people are very passionate about car tab fees, and there's been statewide initiatives relating to that. I, personally, I feel to be more equitable across the board for the, for those that use our city roads. I, I would prefer the, the 0.2% sales tax, because we get people that are driving in our community, shopping, and doing things, and they would be helping to offset the costs of the, the use of the roads. Much, so much of the traffic that we experience in town is people driving through Bothell. And I think it's only fair that those people driving through town, when they shop in town, help support the maintenance of our roads. So that, that would be my preference. And, and I'm assuming that we could do that in conjunction with the $20. So, but that's my only comment for now. And everybody's had an opportunity to speak, that's wanted to speak. So I want to thank everybody for some good conversations tonight, and I want to thank the public, for those of you who are still here, for sticking around. We don't usually have a crowd this big this late. And, and for the, all the conversations that we've, good civil conversations that we've had tonight, I want to thank everybody for those. That being said, since we've extended to 9:40, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember Rayum to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.